...of the United States of America and two republics for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting West Berlin State Council order roll call Katie.
Please, please, here. Waterman. Crowner.
Here.
Raleigh.
Here.
Hightmeyer.
Here.
Okay, we need to perfect approve the agenda.
So moved.
Support. There's a motion with support and discussion. Roll call.
Crowner.
Hi.
Raleigh.
Hi.
Hightmeyer.
Hi.
Please.
Hi.
Okay consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Support.
Motion with support to approve consent agenda items one through eleven which are amendments from the regular city council meeting on May second, two thousand eighteen approved city clerk and finance officer attendance at the Iowa Municipal Professionals Academy. Approved a removal of police reserve officer Wilder. Approved training police, approved training for police officer reserve officer Severs. Approved a renewal of untangled wet filter and firewall software. Approved payment to municipal supply, approved payment to Des Moines County Regional Waste Commission. Approved payment to Merle Municipal Water Works. Approved payment to Dave Bessine Electric. Approved payment expense reduction services and approved a claims in the amount of six hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-two cents. Any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner.
Hi.
Raleigh.
Hi.
Hi.
Hightmeyer.
Hi.
Please.
Hi.
Motion carried. Staff reports Randy.
I am. The department heads are working on evaluating their employees and I'll be getting the department heads ones done.
Oh damn, I'm sorry.
I didn't even hear what you said, I was always, I just knew it was my turn.
I was looking down on, I had something written next year or so.
You guys really threw me there for real.
What's going on here? We getting in an argument already?
Go ahead Dan.
Anyway, we're working on evaluations, I'll get the department heads done once they get theirs done and turned in to me.
Anything for Dan? Randy.
I talked to the contractors today on our street projects. Hicki Contracting will be in tomorrow to get the other side of Prairie and Meadow ready to pour. Um, they're waiting on their cell cylinder to get broken tomorrow. And if it makes strength, they'll pour Friday, if not, they'll, they will pour on Monday. Four Seasons, um, is still progressing down on Broadway. With the rain we had over the weekend and with the overpasses, there's some areas that they're still kinda wet, so they, they were kinda farming those today, getting them opened up, hoping to get that dried up. And they're also waiting for Alliant to lower a gas main over there. That's already, it's all exposed and ready to be lowered. They're anticipating that probably by the middle of next week, they should be able to turn it over to Mike Nelson so he can start paving over there. Um, W L Miller looked like they were gonna finish up putting the asphalt down on Gear Avenue. They still have a few other things after that. They have to put concrete around the, uh, manholes and water valves. And as soon as they're completed on gear, they'll move directly to agency and start over there, so. Things are moving along, it doesn't seem like we've had a lot of rain, but it's came at the wrong time and kinda slowed down a couple of the projects, but overall, everything is progressing.
Got the asphalt down, didn't they?
Yeah. Yep, all the main lines done.
Well, I, I wrote down between you Dan and, and Frank, uh, Rod's email that he sent the other day about the color run. So if you wanna see what, uh, we kinda talked about that this morning, maybe just letting them run the bicycle route. I don't know if that would be our, you know, if that would work out for them or.
Yeah, I don't know, I just wanted to make sure y'all knew about it, that they were asking us to do that and, and, you know, it's fine that they, you know, the Booster Club wants to do such a thing. I just, as I told him, I said, your problem's gonna be is between police and public works figuring out how to block how many more streets and how many more areas and.
Well, the cert team will be here for the bike race, if it's going on for the bike race, we'll just bring them in a little early. And hopefully, we should have several officers working that morning toss, so.
After staff this morning Hans, I did drive a route that starts at the main drive in front of the high school and turned and went west. Then went down Melville and then continued around on the bike racing area that's already closed down and then back to the high school and that's, that's one point two, between one point two and one point three miles. Just with what we will have shut down and they could maybe incorporate some more out at the mall. I mean, I don't know, I don't know how many miles they actually do on one of these things. And Dan said this morning, he said typically they do a color run at seven o'clock in the morning or pretty early, so. If it didn't interfere with the bike race, that would be an option, but I, that, that's the only thing I can really say about.
It might be just find out what time they wanna do it.
Right.
And they didn't know when I last talked to them, Theresa, I don't have in front of me, what time do we start those bike races?
Um, eight. Well, we start registration at eight.
Start registration at eight and actual races are at nine.
And they just zip right along, I mean.
I know it doesn't take very long to get them over with, but I don't know, we, we'll have to figure out some way to, you know.
Um, the last time I did this five K walk, we started at the high school at the, uh, at the baseball diamond. We went down the sidewalk on Ramsey, then followed Van Reese all the way to the mall road and then came back on Houston, back to Ramsey and back to the high school and we did two laps of that and then two laps on the, on the track to finish. And that was like five, five K supposedly, so I don't know, that's.
I would suggest Dan, either you or, or some of your staff maybe lay out a proposed route that we think's okay with Randy and the police and you and Hans and, uh, be prepared because the next time they call me, I'm gonna suggest they come see you.
Yeah.
And, um, they just called me to see if I cared if they did it during, what, the July and I said, no, I mean, the more the merrier to a point, um, you know.
I think we have it pretty well pegged what, what may or may not work depending on what they wanna do and what kinda bounces that we, like you say, we have to sit down and talk about that, cause I don't know what they want and they don't know what we want, so we need to sit down and talk about it.
Well, and they're really early in the paint, I mean, it just came up and they realized it's a short time and so on and so forth, but, uh, you know, those things are normally well received. I know Kelly talked about running one a couple of years ago, she was gonna do it and then got into it and thought it might be more work than she really wanted to do, but, um, anyway, I just wanted y'all to know about it.
Okay, Frank, what you got?
Just a couple of things, um, the police department would like to thank the Greater Burlington Leadership Class of twenty-seven, twenty-eighteen. Their civic pro- project allowed to make a con donation to the West Burlington Police Department for the purchase of equipment to train our officers in eliminating the threat to an active shooter. And that amount was forty-two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, very happy to get that money, if you look at our webpage, you'll see several happy officers holding the check. And then today, Two Rivers for Law Enforcement Week bought us dinner, actually lunch and dinner. It was a salad and two different types of chicken tenders and Muddy's along with them donated us a cherry pie and an apple pie. So all the officers really enjoyed it and that, and we also took a picture and that's on our webpage of the ladies from Two Rivers and our police officers accepting that present.
Seen those pictures?
Yep.
Good deal, yeah, really appreciate that. Money that we put to good use.
Yes.
Anybody have anything for Frank? Sean's not here. Katie, you got anything going on?
No.
Ashley?
No.
Rod?
Lot of Fourth of July stuff going on, um, we've been working a lot on our, tent thing that we do that we have some complications with as you all know. Trying to change that from a prayer and praise service to something else. Been working on a lot of names, we do have Linda Long has stepped up to run that for us this year. She does a lot of work up with the military people and raise the money and send gift baskets overseas and stuff, so. We're working on, we're trying to get there and, and, um, I, I think we'll have some kind of event. I probably gotta have a different idea for next year, uh, God willing, uh, we'll probably take that event out of the official Fourth of July Day and make it also going on type of event. Um, to try to help get around, uh, the fact that we're not supposed to use the word God or prayer at a city sponsored event. Which of course I totally disagree with, but I can't get the city sued just because of my beliefs, so. Anyway, so we're doing a lot of stuff on that, Linda's, like I said, stepped up and gonna run that. We have all the bands booked, we've got the basic day as, as it normally is pretty much, pretty much laid out and, uh, moving forward.
All right, Frank? Want, please?
No.
All right. Chelsea, welcome, give us an update on the visitors convention, Maryelle.
Hello. I'm just here to do my bi-annual update to you all, um, so springtime, so a little bit of a recap of where we were at in two thousand seventeen and some of our game plan for two thousand eighteen. Um, so I hope you are aware that we did do a major remodel at the Port of Burlington Welcome Center last year, right at the beginning of the year. Um, the facility opened in the eighties and it really had never gone, undergone an extensive remodel since then, so it was time to update, fresh, modernize everything, uh, it was about an eighty thousand dollar project and this is one of the before pictures. And another before and, um, this is what the facility looks like now. Um, it's a space that we're very proud of, we have a concrete floor down there, so hopefully this flood wall will protect from that floor ever getting wet again, but if that happens, uh, we can have cleanup much easier. We also have brand new display cases down there that makes things easier for, um, our staff and volunteers to get into on a more regular basis, update them, keep them fresh. We've also started this very front display case right as you walk in the door, we're calling it the display case of the month. And area businesses, organizations can purchase that spot and kinda have the limelight for the month. And we, we do have about a thousand visitors a month that come through that space, so they have the opportunity to get quite a bit of, um, views on, on their business. So as a recap, um, just a reminder to you, our economic impact numbers are a year behind, so, uh, two thousand sixteen is the most recent data that we have, but two thousand sixteen visitor expenditures ta- um, topped out at a hundred, over a hundred and thirty-six million dollars. As we know, construction projects in the area were still going strong during this time, so they've kind of unnaturally inflated those numbers. Um, but that was a two percent increase over two thousand fifteen and then the, or, excuse me, it was a two point eight-five percent increase. And, and this visitor spending saves in Des Moines County residents about four hundred, five hundred and forty-five dollars in taxes, uh, that these visitors are bringing to our, uh, economy. And, um, so we know two thousand seventeen that we did start to see some of that softening, so I'm anxious to see what those numbers were. But in two thousand seventeen, the C V B, um, had our hand in attracting, uh, just shy of forty-seven thousand visitors. Uh, these could be visitors that came because of an event that received grant dollars from our organization, the riverboat dockings, um, fireball run, Ripley's Believe It or Not events, um, are all wrapped into that and those visitors stay in our community about a, about a one point six-three days, so we're kind of a long destination, quick destination, or weekend destination. Uh, but these visitors did generate forty-six hundred hotel rooms and created an estimated economic impact of over eight point six million dollars. We mailed out just about four thousand community guides, uh, to twenty-five different countries in all fifty states, including Washington D.C. last year. And that's based on, uh, when we do our ad placements, people directly asking us to send them more information about our community. We had about thirteen thousand visitors at the Welcome Center, again, representing all fifty states and Washington D.C. and twenty-three different countries. And then our digital community guide saw, had about twenty-four thousand page views with the top cities including Burlington, so a visitor looking at it once they're here in our area already, looking for more things to see. Iowa City, and then I was surprised Dallas, Texas came in as third as the top city of, for views. And then Cedar Rapids and Galesburg and so, a lot of that comes from our digital ad, uh, web advertising, which is targeted to a fifty to eighty mile radius outside of Des Moines County. Hotel motel tax collections in fiscal year sixteen seventeen was about eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand total for the year. That was eleven point five percent de- decrease over fiscal year sixteen, so, uh, we are starting to see that softening. And with that, um, hotel motel occupancy for two thousand seventeen was about fifty-five, um, fifty-six percent occup- or full for the entire year average there. Um, so what we're learning from, you know, conversations with the hotel years and the events out at the Recplex is obviously the construction projects put a strain on our hotels and they were full all the time, which is great, but not so great for the events that we host in our community, so especially those teams that are coming here for the sports events. Um, they got frustrated and they decided to go someplace different and we're learning those teams are creatures of habit. So they haven't necessarily tried to come back, um, so they've replaced us on their schedule at this point. So we're trying to be creative here and, you know, how can we brainstorm and recreate, uh, some of this team traffic back, get some of these old teams back to our area. Uh, so we've worked with the Recplex and we've created a brand new event, an invitational only softball tournament, and we've invited top notch teams from Iowa, Illinois, Missouri and Wisconsin, and right now we have twenty-eight teams that are coming. They get to come play in the tournament for free, it's a Friday, Saturday, Sunday tournament with the requirement of staying in one of our hotels for at least one of those nights. So we can generate that hotel motel revenue, plus then we know they're gonna be shopping and dining and all of that while they're here in the area. We have teams from Des Moines, St. Louis, St. Charles, Chicago, Kansas City, uh, coming from all over, we're really excited. A lot of the teams have never been here before and another one of the reasons why we created this tournament is to, we were hearing from the teams that play here often, they're playing the same teams all the time. So this is a way to get some new competition out on those fields and give them a world-class experience of our community so that they think about us again next year or for another tournament maybe later in the season. So with that, the Convention and Visitors Bureau is kind of taking a sports strategy for two thousand eighteen, we're trying to take the notion of what is our area good at and known for and how can we help bolster it? Putting a focus versus trying to do a lot of things and, you know, not going very deep into ma- many of those, so that's why we picked sports. Um, so we are helping to support the indoor sports facilities and the, the, those complexes along with the outdoor complex, we're gonna do some combined marketing there to get some, um, wider views there. We've just hired a consultant who are going to conduct a sports market study, kind of learn what is our sports saturation rate, you know, how much is too much? What are other communities within a hundred mile radius of us doing that maybe we're not doing that we could increase those teams to come back to us and amp up those amenities, uh, while those teams are here. We also created a brand new, um, software system and it is for any event that we create room blocks. Instead of them having to call all of the hotels individually and book the rooms or, you know, call and find out this property's sold out and have to keep going down the list. Uh, every, uh, room that's reserved for them in the room box is now in one consolidated website. So they can get on there, type in how many rooms they need, if the whole team wants to be at one hotel, the coach can book it all in one location. Just trying to make it an ease of convenience, um, for those teams to encourage them to just keep thinking of us for all of those tournaments. So far, we're using that with our, uh, new invitational tournament that we've created and it's working out pretty well. Uh, the hotels are liking it, the coaches are liking it, so hopefully, uh, we can use it with more events here moving forward. And then we're just also taking this year and learning from the area event organizers, they're the ones that are on the ground in the middle of these events all day, every day, you know, what are they seeing in other communities that they wish we did? And just trying to learn from each other or where services that the C V B doesn't currently offer, that maybe we can start to offer to help make their events more successful. And I bumped the button too fast, but one of the events that we did, um, book and hopefully you've heard about it already is the Convention and Visitors Bureau has signed contracts to host a Gus Macker, um, three-on-three basketball tournament. And if you're not aware, Gus Macker is a national three-on-three brand. It started in Building, Michigan in nineteen eighty-seven in, uh, his name is Scott McNeil, but Gus Macker himself's parents driveway. It started out with just some college buddies home over spring break, decided to get a game together and next thing they know, the, the block is showing up. And then the next year, the entire, you know, ne- neighborhood has shown up and then the next year, the entire town has shown up and they thought, wow. Everybody else wanted to play, we'll take this thing on the road, so now they tour the Midwest. Um, they've played, um, thousands of games since the nineties. And we are really excited that Greater Burlington is the only Iowa location for two thousand eighteen. So close enough, uh, tournaments to us historically, Peoria had had tournaments and Quincy is on their twenty-eighth year of a tournament. Um, so we're expecting about two hundred teams, which is a thousand players plus their spectators, so the three thousand people in our community for the weekend. The games will be played on the riverfront between the port and the auditorium and the parking lot space there. And Gus Macker is really excited about our venue, our location, and, um, they're doing what they can to support us. They really think being on the river will attract teams all that right there on its own. Um, and it will be held August fourth through fifth with registration starting Friday night, so, uh, could be a very easily a two-night stay for those teams also. And we are in a three-year contract, uh, with Gus Macker, so this will, uh, we're hoping to have this become a, a big annual event for our area. And just a quick preview.
Bring on the madness at the Gus Macker Three-on-Three Basketball Tournament in downtown Burlington, August fourth and fifth. Grab your friends and battle your way to the top at the Mississippi River Courts. Divisions are open to men, women, and kids of all ages and skill levels. Register your four-person team at macker.com. Are you the top three-on-three team in the area? Prove it. Bring the madness at the Gus Macker Three-on-Three Basketball Tournament in downtown Burlington.
So we're really excited about our new videographer that we have on our staff at the partnership and so, uh, he gets credit for creating that video, but, uh, we will be pushing that out on social media to help attract teams and it'll be played on two nights, um, on the Jumbotron down at Steamboat Days with a chance to attract teams that way also, so it's kind of.
Are you gonna have this maybe out at the, uh, movie theaters? Play the video?
You know what, I hadn't thought of that yet, but I will look into it, yeah, it's like.
That's my next thing, I want this guy to come out and talk to us about making a video for the city that we could play out, out at the theaters. Cause I mean, Minneapolis is different, so I don't know why, why we couldn't do it.
I bet Dustin can help you out, he, he's very talented, um, so we're excited to have him on, on our staff. Video's the wave of what everybody wants to see right now, so, um, we're excited to amp up our game that way, but the commercial at the movie theater is a great idea. So that's what I've got, any questions?
When's that softball tournament?
Softball tournament will be June twenty-eighth through July first, um, that last weekend there. And it's a ten U and a twelve U tournament.
At what age?
Ten U and twelve U. Twelve U is full, um, but we've got four spots left in ten U.
Have you ever talked with, uh, schools about this time of year when they're, because I know we're probably, uh, hotel rooms are probably filling up or full here for the next couple of weeks with graduations going on this weekend and then next weekend you got Memorial Day, I mean, how, how can you coordinate with them maybe? For the next year or whatever to where you don't have an event going on that requires a whole bunch of hotel rooms or where there's a conflict to where, you know, people are wanting to come to town, grandpas, grandmas, aunts and uncles for, for graduations and they can't find hotel rooms.
It is kind of a conversation, uh, we had with one of our event organizer meetings, you know, uh, might come to the point where I kind of create a master list of what, what do we know are the annual events every year, so that when they go to set their dates for the next year, they kinda know, you know, not to conflict with each other that way. Uh, it's, it's something we're still brainstorming on.
Well, thank you for your update. Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Alright, anybody else wishing to address council matters that aren't on the agenda tonight? We'll go into a public hearing, open a public hearing to, on the proposed amend, budget amendment for fiscal year seventeen eighteen. And we're looking at six hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars in expenditures and two hundred and twenty-nine thousand and eighty dollars in revenues. By having, did we receive any written comments Katie?
No.
Anybody wishing to make a comment? Close the public hearing then. Your business, item number one is consider resolution approving the budget amendment for fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
So moved.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Hightmeyer?
Hi.
Please?
Hi.
Karen?
Hi.
Motion carried. Item number two is consider payment Leander Construction for work completed on the wastewater treatment plant. In the amount of three hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-three cents.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? This brings it up to about eighty-four percent of total payments, what I read. Roll call.
Hightmeyer?
Hi.
Please?
Hi.
Crowner?
Hi.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Motion carried. Item number three is to consider proposals for auditing services from June twenty eighteen to June twenty twenty, which are twelve thousand, twelve thousand five hundred and thirteen thousand with, uh, five thousand five hundred dollars, uh, contingencies possible.
Motion to approve.
Support.
There's a motion with support now, I'm sorry, I should've said CPA Associates. Roll call.
Please?
Hi.
Crowner?
Hi.
Raleigh?
Hi.
Hightmeyer?
Hi.
Okay, motion carried. Item number four is to consider purchase of water meters, meter reading equipment, installation services from Neptune. Amount of four hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars. Motion to approve.
Support so we can talk about it.
Motion with support, any discussion?
Still not sure we should be taking all this money out of the water fund, I mean, out of the sewer fund to pay for what honestly is, uh, mainly water expense. Even though I don't like the other ideas of raising water rates or borrowing the money, they would seem to be a cleaner idea than taking money that we've been building up in the sewer fund to pay for this. Like you said in my memo, we are gonna take some out where they don't have sewer, um.
How many is that?
I don't know how many accounts we, how many account, water accounts do we have that don't have sewer?
Uh, approximately a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty.
I don't, how many accounts total?
Um, fourteen, twenty-five, in there, give or take a few.
Well, I don't know, I, I, I agree with, with Rod, I mean, we raised our sewer rates, we charged extra for capital improvement projects and now all of a sudden, we've got an excess sewer funds, I'm thinking like, oh. People might not be so kindly to be charged higher rates for sewer when we have an excess sewer funds, I'm thinking like, oh. when we have an excess sewer funds that's paying for water. Do we not have enough money or some money in the water capital improvement projects or anything of that nature?
We could take some out of the, the, the water. It's just we built rates of the sewer so we can make that bond payment every year. So we grad, we then, we kind of had pretty significant increases, but it was better than like a hundred percent in one year to get that out. That's why we have the excess sewer revenue, because we had to build that, our, our rates up to make a bond payment.
Uh-huh.
And so I thought once, Dan, I thought you had mentioned to me, you and I discussed this money at budget time also, if you remember right. I thought once you had said maybe some of this extra sewer money could be used to, to pay down interest or- We could not, we could not ask for reimbursement from the, some of these final payments. We could not ask for reimbursement from the SRF and just pay it out of that fund. We could do that. Well, I know you, you and I had talked briefly about it- Oh, we could do that. Um, my thought was to get this water project done, that we're gonna have to spend that kind of money at some point anyway. I mean, we could spread that out, uh, but while we had it, I thought to keep from raising rates any further, we could do it that way. If, if council would rather do something the other way, that's fine. It's, that's just one, one idea. Well, don't get me wrong, I'm not against the project. I'm not against replacing all the water meters. I'm, I don't have any issue with that. I just, I'm not sure we're spending the money from the right account. Yeah, I mean, my, my thought is, is that's how we meter the sewer too, so. I don't know what we have in, what do we have in there, Leslie, in water?
In the water, we, we projected in the next year to have about three hundred thousand in that account.
So we could do a half and half thing probably then, cause it, was this four seventy? Yeah, four hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars.
That's in our regular water account. In our water equipment account, we have about forty, forty thousand.
Oh, so just in our, that would be our, out of our reserves in our water account, not in capital equipment.
Our, our, our capital equipment account is forty, around forty. Our water fund-
Yeah.
Their operating water funds are around three hundred thousand.
We have a little bit in there, but we have to have a little bit too, so.
Have we ever had the uh statutory requirement? Have we ever made that up with the water fund that we were supposed to have when we borrowed the money?
There's been a couple of years we haven't, but most of the time we have, we are making that. I mean, there's been a couple of years we have.
I mean, all, all we're gonna do is rob Peter to pay, to pay Paul.
Yeah.
That's all it amounts to.
Yeah, if our water account gets too low-
And the meters need to be replaced. I mean, you can do whatever you want. If you wanna designate a hundred fifty or two hundred thousand out of water to, and then have ex, and that, some more reserves in sewer.
Just a question, I just- And that would still leave some in sewer to pay, to not reimburse too. Yeah, cause isn't that fund like around a million dollars?
Our sewer fund?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty hefty, yeah, around a million we're projecting.
Isn't it around a million right now?
Well, we're projecting into next year to be a million one hundred and eighty thousand.
Okay, so we could still do that.
Any other discussion? Or what do you wanna do with?
I don't know. I'm, I'm perplexed, cause I, I wanna vote for the project, but I don't, I, I, I don't like the way we're funding it. But that's just me. It's probably not a big deal, but it just seems like we collected all this money from all these people on sewer accounts and now we're spending on water, although I understand your justification, the meter does. And if we take it out of water, we'll probably have to raise, we probably have to charge them at, on that end.
I mean, you can, you can drop the sewer charge and raise the water.
I know.
That's our buck, what it amounts to.
I don't know.
Anyway, and it's not like if this is the first time we ever done anything like this.
Well, I know, but over the last three, four years, people have kind of hit in the, in the sewer fund.
Uh-huh.
We raised them pretty significantly because like twenty-two and a half percent for like several years. To get that rate up there so we can make that bond payment and that, that's part of our, our agreement is we have to have enough in operating excess to make that, make that bond payment.
Well, I'd like to see some of that money come out of the water fund.
How much? Designate a percentage.
Oh, I think probably a hundred and fifty thousand. We've got how much in the water?
We have four, about forty thousand in the capital count.
Yeah.
And then we got about three hundred thousand our regular operating account. But our, our, that's what we project at the end of next year. It depends on our water sales too, you know, it's all against.
Never know, we're gonna talk about water rates here in a minute, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I, I, I should take like a hundred and twenty thousand out of the water, how's that? And put the rest out of the sewer.
Are you wanting to rob down the capital account and then take the remaining out of operating? Is that, or which one?
Say that again.
Are you wanting to take the forty thousand out of the capital account and take the rest out of our regular operating account?
Is that the highest we've ever come with the reserve account? Where we had higher amounts prior?
We, we, well, we generally find a project. It doesn't usually get too high. But do you have anything in mind that we might need?
All right, not right offhand.
Yeah.
Which are you more comfortable with, Leslie?
I would take, I'd take it out of the capital count. It's kind of what the capital count's set up for, what we can. And then take the remainder out of operating here. It's only got forty, about forty thousand in the capital.
Are you in agreement here?
I'll go along with whatever Ms. Lees would like to do.
So if you're gonna take forty thousand out of the capital and then sixty thousand out of the water account?
One hundred and twenty, it'd be eighty thousand, right?
Be eighty thousand.
Sorry.
So then you're still proposing taking the other three hundred and fifty thousand plus of change out of the sewer, right? Yes.
I don't want Leslie to have a heart attack taking more money out of the water.
Everybody ready for a question? Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Okay, motion carrying. When can you get started? Okay.
You say in forty-five days?
Um, that we-
Or within forty-five days?
Yeah.
Okay.
What we do, um, obviously the person wanna do is uh, get some of the material worked so we prepare. But two, we need you guys to make sure the letters that we sent out to your community for appointments is, you know, approved by you. It's under your, under your, you guys like, we've got it kind of, kind of getting this one approved, so there's a few, there's a few-
The next thing we have on our agenda is uh, an ordinance change to the city's right of entry to be able to read. So it'll take us another, it'll take three readings to do that. So timeframe will be just about right. So item number five is to consider first reading ordinance pending chapter ninety-one related to the city's right of entry to read, remove, or change water meters.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion was support, any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Lou.
Carrying. Item number six is consider second reading of an ordinance setting the water rates for fiscal twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, which is a thirty cent increase across all the tiers. Um, we're being hit with a, oh, let's see, a, a three percent increase from Burlington to pay for their operations and bond payments and our bond payments. Uh, the distribution charge is going from twenty dollars and thirty-five cents to twenty-one, twenty-five per meter. First three thousand gallons is no charge, three thousand one to one million to seven-ten to seven-forty per thousand. The next five hundred thousand is four-eighty-four to five-fourteen per thousand. Over one million five is two-eighty-nine to three-nineteen. That's for the industrial and the business. For the residential, the distribution charge is going from twenty-thirty-five to twenty-one, twenty-five. Uh, first three thousand gallons is no charge. Uh, three thousand one to one million to seven-ten to seven-forty per thousand. Uh, sewer has no in, no increase. Uh, capital project fee has no increase also.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion was support, any discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Item number seven is to consider second reading ordinance setting the garbage rates for fiscal eighteen, nineteen. That'll be from twelve dollars to twelve-twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion was support, any discussion?
We had a, just because we're talking about garbage, we had a lot of input on the new can collection and stuff or not? Did that lie out? Katie went? Katie would be the one to know, it's a good thing she's here tonight. That's reason. I mean, I just want-
Comes and goes, I think it, it's progressing, so they're getting, our citizens are getting more used to the idea. Um, Levine's too, I think they're, they're still working with a few struggles, but they're, it, it's coming around. It's a, it's a lot better than it was maybe a month ago.
Have there been a lot of people wanting to switch to the smaller ones, you know?
Quite a few.
Quite a few.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
The one I thought would switch and put her bag out, went ahead and rugged her big trash can out and threw her little bag in there. And watching the whole block and the other two or three blocks in there, I thought it went very well.
They can, they can move, cause they're, my Mondays, you, they usually showed up about ten AM and now they're there before eight, cause I've, I've watched them both, both Mondays. When I was getting ready to come to work, I'm sitting at the kitchen table looking out the window and here they come and- Yeah, they're coming too early. Too early. Yeah. I'm great. Thursdays used to be like that always. Thursdays were always- Mondays. I used to have plenty of time on Monday, sometimes to almost noon. Now it's like, no, you better be done and ready.
They've picked up mine at six-thirty ever since we've lived there, so don't complain.
You must like be, you must be like on the first go or something.
Right next to the post office in the other house.
Yeah, you know I'm gonna be late taking a garbage bag out now.
Yeah.
But it uh, really looks nice how they just go down there and just pick them out. Once in a while they have to get out of the truck, but-
Yeah, there's still some people that put out some extra, which-
But ninety-five percent-
Yeah, they said they don't.
They just go right down.
Okay, thanks, Katie.
Any other discussion on that? Roll call.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Item number eight is to consider second reading ordinance setting recycling rates, which are three-sixty-five to three-seventy-five.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion was support, any discussion? Roll call.
Lees?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Item number nine is to consider request for a right-of-way permit for Danville Telecom on Derrick Lincoln Drive.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion was support, any discussion? Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Hightmeyer?
Aye.
Lees? Aye.
Motion carried. Any other old business? Anyone out here wishing to address council matters we did discuss or didn't discuss? Better pay the motion as adjourned.
So.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you.